Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Village of Riverside Board of Trustees' Regular Meeting of Thursday, January 18th, 2024. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Soul, please call the roll.
President Pollak.
Here.
Trustee Marsh Azga.
Here.
Trustee Mateo.
Here.
Trustee Evans.
Here.
Trustee Galgos.
Here.
Manager Francis.
Here.
Attorney Pickrell.
Here.
Also present Clerk Soul.
We have a quorum, and for the record, I'll note that trustee Cause is sick this evening, was not able to attend due to illness, and trustee Clarity due to work conflict this evening. President's report, I've got nothing to report other than to remind everyone of upcoming village meetings. The Historical Commission will meet on January 22nd in room four of the town hall. Planning and zoning commission has a meeting on January 24th, also in the same room four. And the Parks and Recreation Board will meet on January 29th at the Riverside Public Library. Managers' report.
Thank you. I have a few items to report on this evening. I wanted to give the board a quick update with regard to the strategic planning survey. It went live last Friday, and we have received a lot of feedback so far. In total, we've received 175 responses. The most we received was within the first 24 hours, where we received a little over 100 responses. The other ones have come in incrementally over the past several days. Also, I wanted to point out, as promised, I would speak with the consultant that's working on the Parks and Recreation surveys to find out what is, should be a good target for a statistically valid survey, and they said anywhere from 300 to 400 responses. So I wanted to provide that quick update as well. Additionally, I wanted to make mention that the weather has proved to be challenging over the past seven days, from snowfall to frigid temperatures. I want to say thank you to our public works team for doing an amazing job with snow removal on Friday, January 12th, and then addressing two water main breaks on January 15th during the extreme cold. One of the repairs went into the early morning hours, 4:00 AM to be exact, on January 16th in the frigid temperatures. Also, I want to thank the fire department for all of their work during the frigid temperatures and the snowfall. They had numerous calls for assistance over this past weekend. They had over two times the volume that they would have on a typical weekend. Restaurant Week is coming up. The Village of Riverside's Economic Development Commission is very excited to share that Riverside restaurants have signed on to be part of a restaurant week called "By the Burbs." The collaborative effort with Visit Oak Park will spotlight our local culinary scene between February 23rd and March 1st. During this week, participating restaurants will have a special menu or feature signature house dishes. So far, we have a few commitments and other restaurants that are interested. We still encourage restaurants to sign up and join and be part of this. This event is an excellent opportunity for our restaurants to attract new patrons and to contribute to the economic vibrancy of our community. As of today, the following businesses are participating: Dulce Mommy Cafe, Cubanito Express, Michael's Pancake House, Sandtrap, and Choo Choo. And then I have a couple of Parks and Rec items. Special thanks to all the members of the Big Chill Volunteer Group. That includes Mark Michikowski, Ryan and Kevin Sherman. They assisted with installing and filling the community ice rink. Additionally, directors Buckley and Tab volunteered their time to assist the crew, all while enduring the snow and sub-zero temperatures over this past weekend. The village wants residents to enjoy the ice rink, have fun, and also be safe. Parks and Recreation brochure is currently online and includes popular programs such as their indoor playtime, imagination station, coed volleyball, and spring soccer. The department's also hiring for all counselor positions for before and after-school program and summer camp. Additionally, summer camp registration will begin on February 6th for returning campers. So those that are interested can also go online and visit the Parks and Recreation Department page for additional information. That is all I have.
Thank you, Manager Francis. And I wanted to reiterate the thanks to our Public Safety and Public Works Departments. I know how challenging this time of year is for those staff members. And if you've ever witnessed fixing of a water main break in the wintertime, you know how challenging and difficult that work is. Now's the time for resident comments for non-agenda items. If there is any public comment on non-agenda items, now's the time for that. Comments for items that are on the agenda may be made when the item is brought up during the board discussion or consideration of that agenda item. Is there anyone who would like to address the board on a non-agenda item this evening? Yes, sir. Please give your name and the subject matter on which you want to speak.
Got it. Hi there. I'm pleased to see that I know most of you. My name is Jay Reyes, I'm at 285 gauge, and I've been a Riverside resident for a number of years. Thank you. Let me begin by thanking you for the opportunity to speak. And also to just mention that in my 20-something years here as a village resident on my way over here, I was thinking that I've only been here before the village about two or three times. And that really is a compliment to the hard work that you and your predecessors have done in addressing issues that are important to me and to my neighbors. So I know you don't hear it often, but thank you. Thank you for your service. I realize it's a long day, and you have hard work ahead of you. I have a few sheets in front of me, but I assure you, it's just about a page and a half worth of comments, and I'll get out of your way. I'm here on behalf of my brother Louis Reyes and his wife Liz. They've been here about as long as I have, believe it or not. They raised three kids here, Blythe, RB, honor students, one police officer. I was hoping we could get them to the Village of Riverside, but he ended up going to a neighboring community. I'm still hopeful. I'm still hopeful we can keep them here in town. My brother's also a businessman. He might have done some work for some of you all, but certainly for our friends and some of our other neighbors. The point being that over the course of his 20 years, he's ingrained himself well to the village community, and he's done pretty well for himself. Some people that know Gretchen and I well, my wife Gretchen and I pretty well, say, "I didn't know that you had a brother. How is it that, you know, we've known you all so well, and we don't know that you have a brother?" Well, mostly he keeps to himself. Him and his wife tend to be more outdoorsy, nature, granola-y people, and we're more social, go-out-and-get-out kind of people. And that's actually the nature of why I'm here to talk to you today. They're duck enthusiasts, ducks. They have pet ducks, and they've had them for quite some time here in town. The official name is Anadide or Anadide, but they're water birds, you know, little ducks that you'd find on a farm or something along those lines. They don't sell those ducks. They don't breed the ducks, and they don't keep them as livestock. They don't eat them. They're pets. Well, on various occasions, they've interacted with the village related to their duck hobby, their duck enthusiasm. You know, they've sought plans to expand their water feature, the little place where the ducks can hang out and do their little swimming and that sort of thing. They even cooperated with the village some years ago related to Illinois Department of Natural Resources review of their little operation. No violations or anything like that. They actually commended, you know, their little operation and their practice and that sort of thing. But the point being that it's just been something that has gone on for some time. They've, you know, enjoyed their hobby, and they've been unmolested up until this point. So at no time has there been any issue related to the keeping of the ducks. And I think the reason is quite simply, and I'll say this as carefully as I can, there is no express provision, prohibition in existing village code related to having pet ducks here in town. Okay? There is no express prohibition to having a pet duck here in town. That's, it's not a legal opinion, it's not an opinion, it's an actual, it's a fact. We can review that shortly, but there is no reference to ducks or Anadide in the village code. A few weeks ago, though, something seemed to have changed within the peaceful coexistence between this duck hobby and the Village of Riverside. They received the notice that indicated that the village code prohibited the, you know, ownership or possession of ducks and that the animals had to go. And I think that's something that precipitated my desire to come and speak with you today and to actually show you what the code says. So what does the code say? Well, let's see for ourselves here. I just took the language that is listed in the municipal code, and I just put it on a little cardstock to show you all so that you could see what it is that we're looking at. But it's just a copy of the existing language. And one of the things, I hope I can keep that thing propped up here. But the point simply that you'll find here that we have a laundry list, that a whole Old McDonald, if you will, list of animals that are listed that are expressly prohibited in the village code, right? We have oxen, we have cows, we have sheep, we have mules, we have horses, but we don't have an express prohibition against ducks, right? There's no mention of ducks here. There's no, geese either, the same family, Anadide are just not listed in here. And so the village ordinance that we reviewed noted that the catch-all provision is what's concerning, right? That there's some language in here that's used as a catch-all. Now, lawyers like me will write up little provisions that sort of help capture the entire picture, the spirit of language related to that. And that here, the catch-all provision, it makes reference to wild, dangerous, vicious, or untamed animals, right? Well, that's not a duck. Sometimes the catch-off, the catch-all language works, and sometimes it doesn't, usually it doesn't. Here, the catch-all language definitely doesn't capture ducks. There's, there's nothing wild, there's nothing dangerous, there's nothing vicious about a domesticated duck. You know, it doesn't take a lawyer to figure that out. We're talking about a little duck, size of a bird, usually. My sister-in-law Liz, she likes to, she snuggles with her ducks. She pets them. She sometimes dresses them. I don't understand it, I'm not asking you to understand it, but that does not an untamed, dangerous animal make. I don't get it either, right? I'm more of a bulldog person, but they're in the ducks. And again, it doesn't look like there's an express prohibition, and it doesn't look like the catch-all language actually addresses the issue of ducks. The ducks that they have, they didn't go out and capture or anything like that. They got them from other duck enthusiasts. There's about 6,000 or so in the Chicagoland area, so not a ton of people, kind of a niche hobby. But there are people that sometimes will just not have room for them anymore, not choose to have them anymore. Other times, they're going to be euthanized, and the duck community will kind of rally together and take these little guys and kind of give them a home. The point simply being that we think that there's been a change to the interpretation of this language or the practice of the village from this language, but the ordinance didn't change. There has not been, you all have not decided that you wanted to change this process or address this matter, because the ordinance would have changed. I think somebody else might have picked up this language and looked at it and decided that perhaps now there's some other issue that precipitates this. And I get it. I think normally when a village wants to change a practice or policy, then they come back and they pick up the ordinance and they change it. But that's not what happened here. And I think as a result, we're put in a situation where this not very good language is attempting to be used to tell my brother and his wife that they need to get rid of their pets. I guess the thing is, when you look at this language, what if it were your pet? Is there enough language here to convince you that you should get rid of your pet? What if it wasn't a duck? What if it's a gerbil? What if it's a rabbit? What if it's an iguana or a ferret, right? It's not expressly prohibited here, right? Is a rabbit a wild and dangerous? Of course not. Of course not. It doesn't take a lawyer to see those things. But that's sort of what's happening right now. And so I'm asking the village to review this language again, to reconsider whatever prior determination they've made related to this language, and to reconsider it, because I don't think that, I don't think we have what they intend to do here. I don't think they have the legal standing to do it. I hate the idea of wasting my and our precious few village resources and our personal time to take on this issue, to review it, when I think we can sit down and have just an honest conversation about it and figure out how we can resolve it. As I did reach out to some of you all when we initially got notice, thank you for your responses, I appreciate that. I'm hoping that we can continue to work in a cooperative manner, sit down, discuss the issue. Mr. Pickrell has been kind enough to discuss the issue with me prior to today's meeting, and so I appreciate that. I'm hoping that we can just find some resolution to this and get on with it. I know you have a lot of other busy things going on, and you'd rather not be dealing with pet ducks. Thank you, though, for your time. I again invite the village to meet with me and to discuss the issue. If you have any other questions, I'd be glad to address them. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. We don't normally engage or respond to resident comments in this time, but I would just add for the board and the public that this is really an administrative matter, that our staff is responsible for interpreting the code and administering the code. And so, and I know that Mr. Reyes has been working with our staff, so we'll leave it at that. In terms of whether, this applies across the board, anytime a trustee feels, sees an issue that they think needs to come before the board, you can reach out to Manager Francis or myself, and we'll take that under consideration. So, thank you, Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Appreciate your time. Thank you all. Have a good night.
Anyone else wishing to address the board on non-agenda items this evening? Seeing none, we'll go to the consent agenda. Clerk Soul, will you please read the consent agenda?
Approved voucher list of bills, January 18th, 2024. Approved Village Board of Trustees' regular meeting minutes, January 4th, 2023. Review and file, November 2023, finance monthly report. Review and file board and commission minutes. Economic Development Commission, regular meeting, November 20th, 2023. Landscape Advisory Commission, regular meeting, November 14th, 2023. Foreign Fire Tax Board, regular meeting, May 3rd, 2023. A resolution authorizing the village manager to create a purchase order for a not-to-exceed amount of $39,636 for the purchase of rock salt from Cargill Incorporated for 2024 snow and ice control. A resolution authorizing the village manager to approve change order number two in the amount of $25,225 for the required subgrade stabilization as part of the Shenstone Reconstruction Project. And a resolution authorizing the village manager to waive competitive bidding and issue a purchase order for the not-to-exceed amount of $27,423 to Halloran Equipment for the purchase of a battery-powered, zero-turn, commercial-grade mower.
Thank you. Does anyone have any reason to pull anything off the consent agenda? Seeing none, clerk, could I have a motion to approve in a second?
Motion made.
Second.
Motion by trustee Galgos, second by trustee Marsh Azga. Any discussion on the motion? If not, clerk Soul, please call the roll.
Trustee Marsh Azga.
Aye.
Trustee Mateo.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Galgos.
Aye.
Motion is approved. Department, Board, and Commission reports. Are there any Department, Board, or Commission reports this evening? I do have one item I would like to bring up. The staff received an inquiry from the Starbucks Cannabis Dispensary about changing the permitted hours of their operation. Currently, under the village code, the zoning ordinance, it states that the permitted hours for this type of business is 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM. However, state statute permits the hours of operation to be from 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM. Starbucks has made an inquiry requesting if the village would consider a text amendment to allow them to open at 8:00 AM. In other words, change our code so that cannabis dispensaries would be allowed to open at 8:00 AM rather than 9:00 AM. I would like to know if the board has any objection or any concerns about our Planning and Zoning Commission and staff moving forward with that consideration of that text amendment.
No objection here.
Have we received any complaints from neighbors?
So we'll be providing the board an update related to traffic flow, but Director Buckley has been checking in with those neighbors, and one of the items was every so often they do observe someone still making, turning onto Berkeley, and so we're looking at what we can do to mitigate it, maybe some additional signage. It doesn't sound like it's a tremendous number of vehicles, but anything that we can do to mitigate. But from what I am told, beyond that, they've been a good new neighbor.
Yeah, that sounds like a traffic issue, not a business operation issue.
Correct.
Okay.
Except for it expands the hours where there might, it might draw more traffic.
If I may, the reason for the request is the Starbucks has noticed with their other store that they have that typically that 8:00 to 9:00 o'clock are those that are coming for, that have the medical card, and while they're not a medical dispensary, they do offer discounts to allow for that. And so they noticed that many that come during that time are those that go to the dispensary for that purpose. And so they average that they're probably losing $2,000 to $3,000 during that missed timeframe.
Are they not able to come at 9:00?
I think it's more of just seniors and things of that sort, or those that want to come before work.
So if we sort of agree to do this, we will talk about it again, right?
Yes, thank you. This would just be to allow the Planning and Zoning Commission to proceed with public hearing and consideration of an amendment. It would, you know, go through their public hearing process and come back to the village board for action before any changes are made. Just didn't want to proceed if there were objections to at least considering it.
I just want to call one or two neighbors and talk about it.
Sure. Given that, I will direct staff to proceed with the consideration of that text amendment to the zoning ordinance. That is all I have for Department, Board, and Commission reports. Now we move on to pending business. We have a resolution revising policy for village sponsorship or support of special events. This is an item that we discussed at our last board meeting, and I'll turn it over to Attorney Pickrell to fill in the board and update the board.
Thank you, President Pollak. Yeah, this, we discussed this at the last meeting, and so this should be largely familiar to you. The board identified four changes that were requested, and so they've been incorporated herein, they've been highlighted in red. The first change would be that only local people and entities would be able to have a winter display. This language mimics the banner policy the board identified. Additionally, there's some language changes throughout the policy to reflect the preference for local entities. Additionally, there is a change to specify that the displays may not be fixed inside the ground, but have to have a weighted base that solidly anchors it, so there should be no danger to any underground infrastructure. The third change was to limit, we had said that the sign, there must be a sign identifying whose display that is. I, when I originally drafted it, it was it has to be visible from the sidewalk, but then we wanted to decide on an outer limit for how big can that sign be? I've suggested two feet by two feet. There's another, there was no particular magic to that size, it was just a suggestion. If the board is satisfied with that, we can, we can keep it there or, you know, adjust as needed. And the third, I'm sorry, the fourth amendment was specifying that the applicant is responsible for maintaining that sign. So, Maggie, if you go over it again, if you want, I feel like you're already familiar with it. If you have any questions or concerns, I'd be happy to answer them.
Before the discussion, I just wanted, I had asked staff to prepare or to provide these aerial or photos so that we can all be clear on which area we're talking about. And so it's my understanding that this, this one landscape area that we're looking at now on the screen is the area where it would be restricted to, correct?
Yes.
That's correct, yes.
Out of the policy. Obviously, the board can change that if you want. If you'll go back to the aerial, Ethan, you can see there are, it was described as east of the train station. As you can see, there's some other islands east of, but I wanted to make sure we were all understanding exactly what we're talking about, so. With that, any questions for Attorney Pickrell or any further discussion? Trustee Evans.
So did we discuss the maximum of six signs there?
No, there, there was no maximum number of signs. There was a maximum size of each individual sign. They could be as small as you want to be, but there was the size, I'm going to recall here was...
Six feet?
Yes, six feet wide by two feet deep. And, you know, and so, but that's just the outer limit on the, on the size. It could be as small as they like.
Is it a really big patch? I don't know how many, it's not, it's not super big. I don't know how many displays we'll be able to put on there.
That's a consideration, right? So if it's, if it's a maximum, if everyone chooses the maximum size, then I think the display was around two, I believe. If they're smaller, then we could obviously put more in.
We're just going to decide as they come in, their requests come in, just let them know there's no more space?
Correct. It's a first-come, first-serve policy.
So we specify an area of ground that it's limited to. Do we want to limit the height of a display?
We absolutely could. Yeah, we, we, yeah, it is addressed sort of indirectly by, that it has to pass safety measures and not obstruct anything, but there's no explicit height limitation, but we can add one, certainly. Six feet, five feet? Whatever you want.
The current language might just take care of it as it is. I thought it was on the other planting bed, so I'm glad you asked for this. I'm good with it.
Okay.
Any other discussion or motion? Is there a motion then to approve the ordinance? Second?
I'll second.
Motion by trustee Mateo, second by trustee Evans. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, clerk Soul, please call the roll.
Trustee Marsh Azga.
Aye.
Trustee Mateo.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Galgos.
Aye.
Motion is approved. Discussion regarding the youth center and remaining facility needs. Manager Francis.
Thank you. So I won't go through where, what we've done in the past, and it's more of we, what we're doing moving forward with facilities. And so just a brief overview, back in 2017, we embarked on this journey of facility needs assessment. We evaluated the different needs. We looked at, from a mechanical perspective, what we would need to do as improvements. And we've, we've addressed certain things along the way since 2017. One key item being Parks and Recreation and getting them the space that was needed for the staff that they had, and also... And also, providing another room that programming could be. And so, we, the Village acquired 43 East Quincy. We did the rehabilitation on it, and now it is a facility that the Village can be proud of and a property that the Village can be proud of. I think it's also important to note that Parks and Recreation was supposed to pay back that loan in 2044. Right now, based on the repayment cycle, it will be paid by 2025. So, essentially, they've made sure to drive in the different programming and revenue that was needed to pay off that loan, which is huge. So, that shows that the Village has had a practice of making sure that we're getting the facilities that we need, but also making sure that we have the means to pay for it. The outstanding need prior to that, so prior even to the study, was the discussion that happened before the Public Works facility was built. It was either Public Works or Public Safety, and at that point in time, it was elected that Public Works would be built on the location in which it currently stands. So, that issue has been addressed as well. And so, little by little, the Village has been attacking these different facility challenges. Additionally, administration, finance, and community development had the need for space. Initially, we had planned to do that in 2022. However, the costs were so high that we kind of pressed pause and said, is there a better way to do this while also containing the costs? And so, staff worked with a furniture provider that we had utilized previously to figure out cubicles and reconfiguring the space and really maximizing the space that we had. And we actually added four additional workspaces that addressed our needs. And so, then it comes back to the remaining items that are on the list as part of the facility assessment and needs, which is police, fire, Riverside TV, a community space, and a meeting space specifically for the Village Board and Commission meetings, because currently we still utilize all Riverside Township meeting spaces, with the exception of 43 Quincy when there are different meetings that can be accommodated within that space. So, we have issued debt to address whether it's facility needs, improvements, or items to go into our facilities, whether it's mechanicals or otherwise. And more recently, in January, we utilized a very small portion of those proceeds for the asbestos remediation in the youth center. And so, now it becomes the question of what are, what would the Board like to see the next steps for staff? And so, President Pollock had requested that this be on the agenda so that we can start charting out what our next steps are. One being, are we looking at rehabilitating the youth center as it currently stands, expanding the footprint, expanding the height? Are we doing that for public safety, or are we looking at an alternative site for public safety? For the benefit of those that weren't on the Board previously, we did look at alternative sites. Unfortunately, we would, A, have to acquire it, so we're talking about millions of dollars to acquire some of these sites, so that adds into our costs, and that's, that will take more time. In speaking with Williams Architects, who we utilized for not only the Quincy plans, but also for our facility assessment and also our needs assessment, they have stated that structurally, the youth center is sound. So, if the Village elected to rehab it and add an additional floor, that, that could be an option. And so, staff is really asking, what, what do you want our next steps to be? Do you want us to begin, do you want us to get a quote from Williams Architects to provide? And I gave some examples that they provided to me of what sketches could look like if we elected to do 3D sketching. And they've also told me those are actually from an older program. They have a newer, better system that they could provide sketches, but it really, we need a vision of what are we asking them to sketch out to? So, are we asking them to sketch something that would accommodate police and fire, fire department on that footprint, in addition to a meeting space, in addition to an RTV studio, and a board meeting space, and also a public space that can be a youth's space as well, given some of the feedback from the Board? So, those are a lot of questions.
I'll start by just asking trustees, what questions or comments do you have?
All of the above, really.
I think as one who, you know, reviewed these materials and also attended the School for the Art Institute presentations recently, conceptualizing different visions for the space, both Williams Architect and all of the students recommended demolition of the former youth center. I realize that structurally, it may be sound, but it is also very, very limiting. And it is, in my mind, that site has one of the most compelling river views in the whole village. And from my point of view, I really think that we should try endeavor to create a flexible space there that invites as many people as possible to see that special view and enjoy that experience. You know, I am not against using it for offices and, you know, holding big meetings there and having people like the Society of American Landscape Architects come in and want to hold functions here because it's so special. So, I think that as much as, you know, it's important to preserve things, I mean, there are, there are companies that will come in and recycle, you know, the materials that, you know, are being demolished and so that they don't go into landfill, so that they can be reused for a, another purpose on another day in another project. So, I think my first and general comment is that I think we need to start from scratch in that space. I may have other comments later.
Thank you. I would just add to that, that was it five years ago that we had, several years ago, previous Board, not this Board, did hire Williams Architects to consider demo in a new building. That came back at, I want to say, $25 to $30 million. The Board at that time said that's not in the cards for the Village.
A little pricey.
A little pricey, and so, subsequently, subsequently, we did determine that, that structurally, the building is sound, and we could remodel and add on, presuming that that would cost substantially less, but we don't know what it would cost. But still, I appreciate your comments, and if it's something we can always reconsider again. Other comments, questions?
Nothing. I would prefer a brand-new building too, but it costs is, of course, very prohibitive. I would be fine if we did ask the architects to come in with a design with all of our wants and needs. I'm not sure, you know, how long it will take them, but it's worth a discussion. It's worth a look. I also think that the River, of course, is a very nice view too, and I would like to emphasize that.
Well, we have two pending surveys that will give us some feedback on whether residents want public space. Do we want to wait until we have that information?
And I would add too, that Trustee Clarity had called me today and said basically the same thing, that she would like to see more resident input. The surveys that we have out, or the one survey we have out now, the pending Parks and Rec Survey, and her thinking was that, you know, we need to get more public input before she would be ready to make any decisions or recommendations.
So, we know from our work with C4, our surveys, our community events, and our research that a place for gathering is a priority for the Village residents.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. One thing that, that, that we could consider, I think, short term, very short term, is obviously, the surveys are in process. I would be interested in exploring putting something on our website that includes the old Williams study that, for the new building, the $25, $30 million new building, includes the work from the School of the Art Institute architectural students. And have something on the website, and maybe even something, if we can have it be responsive, where people can comment on, on what they see, just to start the discussion. And, and then maybe at some point, we do, once we get the results back from our strategic goals survey, maybe that will lead to another survey. I don't, I don't know if another survey would be necessary, but, or appropriate, but it sounds like you need more information, more time to consider it, and, and hopefully start a discussion, a community-wide discussion on the matter. So, I think that's, is that...
I think we need more information as well. You were the only Board member who was involved in it directly back then, so we all have a lot of learning to do. Maybe having minutes from the meetings where the Board discussed the presentation would be helpful, links to the presentation.
And I included the, in the agenda packet, the videos that were done for the all-intensive purposes, those conditions are still the same, some of them a little worse. And so, I can certainly do that if you'd like. I can maybe put together a timeline. The Williams renderings are really rough. They're just boxes on a page. So, it gives you an idea, but remember, those renderings were done when we were looking at trying to create a space for Parks and Recreation, to relocate them over here, and then also completely having to remodel admin finance, bring people up from the basement in the administrative and finance offices. So, a lot has changed where now our scope is narrowly, more narrowly focused, too.
I, I think my goal here tonight is just to start the momentum, start real momentum. It's been several years since we really got deeply involved with this issue, and I'd like to get that started again. Staff, is there anything else that you can, you would like to see or need?
No, I think, so, I believe I know what you're looking for, for the next meeting to, for us to put together. The one thing I would say, and I'll work with Director Tab, is if we don't make some decisions about what to do with the youth center, we're going to have to start making some costly repairs on that building. We've been deferring it with anticipation of doing something in the near future, but, for example, the asbestos remediation, that could no longer wait. Luckily, we issued the bonds, and that helps pay for that particular cost. And so, it's just something that, while the decision doesn't need to be immediate, we need to have some direction in the near future.
And the asbestos remediation would have to be done no matter what.
Correct.
Even if we tore down the building, we'd have to do that first, so.
Correct.
That was a prudent use of money to go ahead and do that.
And initially, it was a small space that just needed to be remediated. And so, Director Tab and Director Buckley and I all had a discussion of what makes the most sense, right? To just address this one section, or let's do all the remediation that's needed on those tiles, so then we don't have to come back to it? Because we've done it piecemeal in the past, and it's long-term when you're doing those things, it just costs the Village more.
Yeah.
So, I will work with Manager Francis to get something up on our website and maybe a press release announcing that it's on the website. That information will be available to everyone, trustees and everyone else, and we'll figure out how to do that, and we'll, this will become a somewhat regular agenda item, I'm hoping, so that we can keep things going and keep the discussion going, so.
Can, can we get a wish list of the various, how much office space, I, having meetings over there, that is new to me. I didn't know that that was part of the consideration, how much RTV needs.
I can pull it all out from the needs assessment, because they provided that as part of just status quo, but also in the future. I think the only thing that wasn't explicitly touched upon was this, this more public/teen space that's been bought up as part of C4 and Board Member feedback. So, that would just be an item that would need to be added on. But we have, we have good data that relatively hasn't changed, but, you know, the recommendation you always get from architects, which always makes sense, is don't just build for the space that you need at, in the snapshot, because typically, by the time it's built, you've already, are out of space, so.
Hmm.
Anything else from trustees? If not, we will proceed as, as I described. Thank you. Thank you for your input. New business, discussion regarding the status of the 2020 text amendments for front-loaded garages. Discussing this with, actually, with Trustee Mateo brought this to my attention. I was on the Board several years ago when we approved certain text amendments and did not, or delayed or postponed others. I think it was at least some of the trustees at the time, our intention to bring this back at some point. So, that's what we're doing here. And our planner, Anne Siren, will kind of give you an overview of what we're talking about. Anne?
Thank you. With just a, I'll give you just a little bit of history before describing what we're asking, but in 2018, as President Pollock mentioned, the Board considered these text amendments relative to garage, front-loaded garages and driveway widths, and their potential negative impact on the Village's landmark designation and character. And the Board didn't adopt those original 2018 draft amendments. They asked an ad hoc committee to reconsider the amendments and return to the Board. They came back in 2020, and some of those elements from the 2018 amendments that couldn't be agreed upon by the ad hoc committee were not included. So, I listed those in the attachment in your materials, and we're just asking you if you'd like to revisit any of those elements that weren't part of that 2020 ordinance.
As some background, this started with Preservation Commission. They had concerns that tear downs were being turned into homes with wide upfront protruding front-loading garages, and they were very concerned about that with its effect on our status. Many of the commissioners wanted us to not allow them at all, but did not push on that. So, Planning and Zoning had several, several, several meetings about it. There was a public hearing. They are on board with it at the time. Preservation was on board with these amendments at the time, so I don't foresee any issue with it being, coming back to us for a vote.
So, this would require a new public hearing process by the Planning and Zoning Commission, so there would be plenty of opportunity for public input, and we'll get the full review and recommendation from our Planning and Zoning Commission, and the trustees will have the opportunity to weigh in. So, this is just really, do you want to start that discussion? Other trustees, any other comments, questions? Yes?
I actually agree with a lot of the items that didn't make it into the 2020 ordinance. So, I would be willing, you know, I think the concept of giving a bonus to encourage, you know, rear garages, and maybe even, you know, a slightly less of intense ratio, size-wise, would be welcome.
And I commend the, our Preservation Commission for bringing this to, to the Village, the Board's attention in 2018. It's one of these issues that's difficult to deal with, because one or two more suburban-styled homes with protruding garages is no big deal. Two or three more, no big deal, scattered throughout the Village, but at some point, it becomes threatening to the character of the community. I don't know that we're, we're to that point, but we're close enough. I think that it's worth considering revisiting these issues, so. Any objection to proceeding with directing staff to proceed with this at the Planning and Zoning Commission level? Any further comments?
Fine with proceeding.
Seeing none, we'll move on. Thank you. Seeing none, we'll move on. Thank you. Trustee reports. Are there any trustee reports this evening?
I have one. On behalf of C4, I would like to invite everyone to attend a open house next, where the C4 team will be introducing the draft plan from our 2050, you know, whole year of surveys and engagement with the public to everyone. So we have 32 initiatives that have been identified, and they are going to serve as the framework for our recommended climate action and resilience plan. So this is going to take place on a drop-in basis from seven to nine PM at the Quincy Street Community Center, 43 East Quincy. So I hope to see everyone there.
And that's Thursday, January 25th?
Mm-hmm, from seven to nine as a drop-in basis. People from the team will be around the room and able to answer questions, and there will be opportunities to vote with fun stickers, and it's just going to be our really next time, so.
And that's at the Parks and Rec Building in Quincy Street?
Yes.
Very good. Again, that's January, Thursday, January 25th, seven to nine PM, C4 Open House, Quincy Parks and Recreation Building. Thank you. Any other trustee reports? Seeing none, the board does not have a need for executive session this evening, so I would ask for a motion and second to adjourn the meeting.
So moved?
Second?
Moved, motion by Trustee Gallegos, second by Trustee Mateo. Roll call.
Trustee Marshazga?
Yes.
Trustee Mateo?
Aye.
Trustee Evans?
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.